Mr. Dave, excellent day.
Excellent.
Good night. Thank you, sir.
First item of business is if you turn off your cell phones or turn them to vibrate. Next item is the minutes.
Move on to 10th.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Abstain.
Now we've got...
Move on to 10th or 12th.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain.
We have one other pattern.
Move on to 13th, that's the canvas.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next item is discussion and approval of claims.
Move it.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll pass around the memorandum of personnel transactions.
And move it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Gloria, did you have anything else? Next item is lifting the tax suspension for DC for this person's request.
Move it. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is approval of resolution for a tax abatement for a mobile home that is uncollectible or impractical to pursue collection.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next item is a Class C beer permit for Shep, Shep's Mobile Market.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Mark.
Morning.
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 About three weeks ago, we discussed a request that I had received for an individual who we were unable to cite a driveway at a location where he wanted to build a new home on the family farm property. We discussed that this is probably not the only one of these situations that comes up. We've routinely not allowed driveway permits in areas where we don't have adequate sight distance to allow them to get on the road safely, both for the people entering the road and the people traveling the road. There are some occasions where we can make a road improvement that would allow a driveway in a desired location, but I wasn't sure at that point that that was in the county's best interest to be going out and making spot improvements on the roads as an attempt to allow residential or commercial development out there. What I was proposing was that we enter into a construction agreement with folks who were requesting this type of an improvement and that they pay the full cost of that road improvement. So, I was directed at that meeting to develop policy and that's what I'm bringing back for review today. You know, basically, the policy cites a problem, which is our challenging topography in some of these areas. We have some very poor sight distance over some of the vertical curves that are graded on the secondary road system, particularly as we get off on the gravels. Basically, upon request, we would go out, survey the road and see if an improvement's possible, do an estimate on the cost of that improvement, and then enter into a construction agreement with the property owner without paying the full cost of the improvement. Does the board have any questions or comments on it?
Looks pretty good to me.
Yeah, looks good.
And move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I brought in an original for your signature, Larry. I'll sign it as well and then I'll start to work on the construction agreement on our inaugural project, so. I've already spoken with him and told him that this process we're working on, probably a couple of weeks, you'll see the first construction agreement.
That's all you've got going on?
Well, we've got plenty going on, but that was the only thing I had ready for the board today. Next week, you'll be seeing a stop sign resolution and some speed limits down on 235th and Allison and 225th. We're going to be starting to see construction traffic through there. We want to make sure that we have a handle on the operation vehicles down in that area before it gets out of hand.
Does he have the bus there?
Yes, that would be the construction routes going in.
Transport routes, for the trucks, whatever.
We completed work on 235th and Allison with the dust control application last week. We needed a couple of days to get out and plate some of our roads, so this week, we'll be starting to work on improvements on Allison North at 235th and then also on...
225th.
225th. Part of that's within the city limits, but this is our development we're supporting, so.
Great.
That's where our efforts lie right now with that work, so.
Mark, has anyone met with the landowners on 225th to explain the...
What we have done is they've all gotten a letter. That's the letter I shared with the board a couple of weeks back. We have started having some discussions about possibility with public meeting, but that's about as far as it's gotten, is just discussing it in-house right now.
And how soon will those trucks start, though? Pretty soon?
They've already started. They're hauling in, they're hauling in construction equipment. A few loads of aggregate are going in right now. Those are utilizing 235th. The contractor is not using that haul road until the 225th in Allison. As far as I know, they're not using it until we get the improvements made. We will close it to all the local traffic while we're doing construction out there to try and keep those residents out of the dust and hazard until such time as we have the road prepared.
Okay.
The biggest expense with this, as opposed to what we had originally envisioned, you know, we had not anticipated one of the contractors using 225th Allison.
Right.
The biggest expense for us, we were going to grade it and improve it anyway. We're right on timetable as far as making improvements to those roads, but we're, we're just having to put down extra dust control. We were going to dust control in front of the residences, now we're dust controlling the entire length, so that we have safe operation out there.
So, does it look like the, the construction trucks, so, use 225th and then, like, the workers will use 235th? I mean, is that the way? No, it's not emerging that way?
What's emerging is the aggregate supply for the project is coming out of LG Everest. They're looking at using the airport exit for the aggregates coming south on South Bridge Drive and then west on 225th to Allison. All of the ready mix, the ready mix is going to be sited at the former Higman facility, which is right behind the rest area on Port Neal Road, so all of that will still come in 235th. I would say that the employees who will be working out there will be using both routes, depending on whether they live in Sioux City, Sergeant Bluff, Salix, you know, it's going to depend really on where they decide to take up residence and then what's convenient for them. Some people will prefer to drive all pavement, use the, use the interstate to get in and out. Others will prefer to take the backroads, so we'll know a lot more once they all get here and we start seeing the traffic really begin to rise in, in March, April period.
Exciting. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Need to see you afterwards.
Oh, did Patty get ahold of you?
About...
A road.
No. Apparently not.
Try and see her before you leave.
I will. I'm also meeting with the city today on the old Lakeport Road intersection issues that we talked about last week, so. Working with Brad in the planning office on dealing with access issues at that intersection, so.
Let me know when that gets resolved.
Yeah, I will. It's hard to say. We're both getting different stories.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What he's talking about is a real mess where the city annexed some property going south. The county owns some property and a private property owner has property and the road's been moved three different times, Lakeport, and it'll get resolved eventually, but...
Yeah, we have, we have some needs to maintain that. It's, it's one of the rare areas in the county where the county acquired right-of-way by warranty deed and we have a property owner who's interested in that, a competing property owner who's interested in it. We have a need to maintain some ownership in that area because we have a drainage structure to maintain. One property owner has one vision for how that area, you know, it's all, it's that corner, there's two triangular parcels where Old Lakeport meets New Lakeport and we have some questions on the ownership. Brad at the planning office probably has the best handle on it right now, so we're going to try and figure out. We know we own everything from the old Lakeport alignment east. The deeds we have in our office show that the city owns everything from the old Lakeport alignment west. The property owner in question is interested in property on both sides of the old Lakeport Road Center line, so.
I'm sure you're going to get it resolved.
We will do something.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item of business is the approval of a resolution approving the property valuation exemption for CF Industries Nitrogen LLC related to the state of Iowa high-quality job programs. I'd like to say it's been a real pleasure dealing with CF. A lot is going to be done down there. This item and the next item will allow us to carry forward the development down there. Denny?
Yep. The first resolution we're going to do is a 20-year plan that begins starts assessment year of January 1st, 2016. It'll be 100% exempt and then if you follow through the schedule, how it comes out of tax rolls right down to where it becomes fully taxable 2036. Obviously, most of us won't be here when this happens, but this is building for the future of everybody, county, tri-state area, our kids, grandkids, whatever. We're doing something that's planned for the future. We'll get some benefits right away, but in our tenures here, probably won't see a whole lot, but go ahead.
I'd move on to first resolution.
I'll second it, and we have already agreed on this resolution. Haven't we already passed this resolution?
Right, this was passed back November 1st, but we had a piece in there that said we had to have a formal, you know, formal meeting with the resolution approving all this, and that's what we're doing today.
And does that have five signatures on it?
This, the first two resolutions won't. The development group can have all five, because that's where you're actually agreeing to do everything that we thought that we're going to do. So, the first one was just one signature, that's approving the schedule, which is on the second page here.
Mr. Gill, would you call a roll?
Lawson?
Aye.
Wilkins?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tripp?
Aye.
Munson?
Aye.
Next item is approving the minimum assessment agreement.
And the development agreement. It's two in one here. And in this one here, this one is written up where it's showing that we're approving everything that we agreed to back on November 1st on a letter sent to Team Mccluskey. In that letter, it said, you know, I'm going to say the best, we've heard Bruce noted that for the best form, what he even said, this thing is starting to explode a little bit, so everything's going very good. We've had several conversations with Gene and the last several have gone very well. And what this also does, there's a piece in here that says whereas the four, all five members have to sign the development agreement, that was a suggestion of Mark, and I think it's a good suggestion because all five of you should sign it.
Yeah.
I'd move on it.
Second.
What if all five of us don't sign off on it?
What?
What if all five of us don't sign off on it?
On the development agreement?
It's still a majority.
Okay.
Still a majority. CF would like to have all five sign off as a form of unity. He stressed that very highly, so it's your people's decisions what you do.
Yeah, I know, I spoke to him.
Okay.
Call a roll.
Lawson?
Aye.
Wilkins?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tripp?
Nay.
Munson?
Aye.
Okay, now here, there's actually a development agreement. You have to go back to where it has it here. I need to sign twice, but we're keeping one and Gene wanted one back in his files. So, that's the one that we go backwards and sign.
We've got it all. I'd say we've got it all, then.
Yep, there's one last, last thing that the chair has to sign, that's the minimum assessment agreement and Gene Mccluskey, and Gene, by the way, Gene Mccluskey has already signed these and notarized them. In case of minimum assessment, the assessor has signed this and notarized it, and Gene Mccluskey has signed and notarized it, all we need is the chairs and I need signature from one of those. Do we keep one?
For the chair?
Yes, we keep one, one go back to CF, and then I'll make a copy for the assessor. And then there's some filing requirements, I have to file the development agreement and the minimum assessment agreement with the auditor and recorder.
So, once again, this is just a formality because this was already agreed upon.
Yes, this is actually against an official. And talking to Gene and Larry talked to him during our conference call with him, that there are a lot of things that we're going to be working together with him down the road here, and those come together where all the board gets together with Gene, and I think we're here to help them, they're here to help us, and I think there's a lot of future things that's going to pop up that's going to make this whole county, Kansas City, City-Stars, and all the other cities be very thankful of what we've got.
Well, I'd just like to say that when I was first brought in, we were saying back in August 12th, I think, or 13th of last year, it was a possibility of us, I think, it was just unimaginable to me that we could work this out, but we were able to do it thanks with the collaboration and worked at the board end with the Chamber of Commerce, also with Maggie Durham out of, out of Des Moines, every other development statewide person. We were able to work with CF Industries that were brought in here initially and I had one set down with those individuals out of Washington and also Mr. Mccluskey out of City, he's, but he's good even.
Chicago.
Chicago, a real pleasure to work with on this entire project, you know, to realize a project that $1.7 billion is unheard of in this entire state, and we're just fortunate to be in Woodbury County to, to accomplish this and gotten it for our county. As you say, Dennis, there's going to be a tremendous amount of industrial spinoff from this, not only CF, but also other businesses and concerns that's going to be benefiting from it and development. I'm hoping that where I probably won't see a lot of it, but I think that my grandchildren and children will see the kind of development here and growth of Sioux City, particularly in Woodbury County, that would have never happened without this particular development. So, I'm really, I'm really happy to say.
Well, you know, what I think you will see, though, is the preliminary planning and really the work that's yet to come. It may seem like this was where we're getting to this point, but I think the work will be planning for the future, establishing partnerships with the other governmental bodies. It is such an opportunity. I'm, I'm looking forward to the next several years of getting together and targeting priorities and having the jobs come.
I agree with Greg.
It's not, it's not going to just, it's just not going to benefit the southern part of the county. This project, based on what we've done thus far and also the future development, is going to benefit the entire county. I mean, I think that places like Mobile and then Smithland, it's going to see the benefits and the rippling effect of this particular project, so it's going to be one of the things for, for the entire county.
Yeah, places like Salix and Sergeant Bluff are going to grow. Hopefully, what we can do with this rippling effect is start lowering some taxes. That would be the main thing. And, you know, you've brought it up before, but, you know, the mega sites, we could or could not go there, but hopefully, we can get there with the, with the help of CF and Mid-American and those people down there, so.
Well, that was one of the things that we talked about even prior to, anyway, prior to this development taking fruition, that that was a possibility. I think that, you know, the relationship that we have established, particularly with the, and I forgot to mention his name, Mr. Trent Neil, has been extraordinary. He has seen the investment that's taken place, you know, in Woodbury County. He commented on the amount of development and the highway improvement, particularly Interstate 29, that's occurred here. We haven't had that kind of growth and development and dollars spent by the state, you know, in this area for the last 25 years, and he said that this is a major investment that the state's made here. We also talked about in one of our earlier meetings, the development of the interchange. We didn't talk about that yet, but that is a real possibility and the state participating in the expense of the study for that. We've never, never had that happen before. So, we're really on the cutting edge of some great development, you know, in this, in this community that's going to be great jobs for people in this community, so I, I really am excited about this.
Mark, what do you have? Thanks, Danny. I don't know that you can follow that, but, boy.
Yeah, about that. Michelle Brown, my newest admin assistant and also our website administrator for the New County website that we're going to unveil today. A couple, three months ago, we gave the, gave department heads a sneak preview into what we're going to release, and Karen, can we get the keyboard or at least bring up the site? Just bring up the site if nothing else. Okay.
Just hand it over.
Yeah. Again, we had a staff departure back in, back in June, which sort of put a disconnect in what our plans were, and so in the last couple of months, we've been working on putting the site back together and coalescing the data. We've reached out to the departments to, Bob, you want to?
Is that the right?
It's hard to see from back here. Karen, can you bring up the site?
Yeah. Oh.
It's dev, dev, we're very, there you go. Just copy that one.
So, you can take out the WWW?
Another dot in there.
Think I was...
There's a dot in front of it.
There you go. You click on it. Yeah. There you go.
Ooh.
Ah la. Do you need a keyboard? The anticipation, no worries. I just wanted my hands on that. Me too. On my neck or on the mouse?
Oh.
Okay, okay. First thing is the visual, the pictures, there's a handful of pictures that rotate every five to 10 seconds of some more prominent features of the courthouse. Again, I think that was a pretty stunning. We've organized the upper right-hand corner of the site to be more intuitive as far as getting to information. The top right-hand corner, again, as it says, these were from our previous site, the most popular items accessed, and again, elections are a big deal. GIS is a big deal, searching for properties and just most popular overall. So, again, when you, when you have time to, to tour the site, I would encourage you to go in there and, and look at those. If we go into, like, under the supervisors on the main menu, again, those are organized and there's weekly agendas, minutes. Again, we have some coalescing of data to do, so, again, this was going to be released last June, so there's going to be some information put together. I, I'm going to put out to the departments, second, last chance to update their data by end of the week, so when I release this at the end of the week, there's, there's still some data that probably needs, should be updated. The video system, the county invested in, we do have that, that link out there as far as being able to access the board meetings or videos of past board meetings. That takes you to a YouTube site that, that lists all the, all the meetings that Pat's office or the supervisor's office have, have posted. A big one under the departments, the sheriff's department, sorry, to the bottom. We're working on three major apps. Two of them are done in the middle, jail search. We do have a very, we have all of our, our residents of, of the jail and you can sort, sort by, by names, time booked, and/or charges, so those are listed. Warrants, again, this pulls directly from our systems and you can see all the existing warrants that are sitting out there. You can sort by date on the left-hand side, so again, that gives you an opportunity to see, to see what's going on in that office back to home. Questions I can answer.
So, like before, each of the departments or elected officials will be responsible for updating their own pages?
Great segue. Yes.
Right.
Boy, it's your first.
We planned that before the meeting, remember?
Yes, as Mr. Smith was saying, what we've integrated is what's called a content management system, and this gives the departments about 99% of the ability to update the data on their site. So, I know Pat's office is really active in posting minutes and AP edits out there, so they'll be able to do that without our intervention. And, and if you scroll down a little bit on that site, there's latest news when departments like secondary, Mark's office, secondary roads, again, I've been, or Pat's office or even the treasurer's office, when they have events, when they post, post a new article, they can, what they call categorize it and they can mark it as far as the latest news. So, if they want that to make a splash on the latest news, it'll show up in that area. So, if Mark has a road closure or something or a bridge out, he can post that, post that notice there. And then there's, you have the search mechanism and the bottom right-hand side, there's job openings, which HR will manage. Again, when there's a job opening or closure, they will post that. It's not our involvement. Again, as, as Jackie said, departments can do this. Had a suggestion from the TRC to receive agenda by email, we added that to the bottom of the, of the, of the site, so entities can register to receive the agendas if they choose to.
Is there any way when you make a... I just wondered if you, if you were going to put on, you could just click it and it shows up on Facebook too.
That's a great question.
Thank you.
I like that's it. I mean, what it does is give us one more tool to get information out to the general public of what's going on in the county in a transparent way. I mean, it's really a neat kind of tool. I like the part where, you don't have to sat do this. We, you know, each department should be responsible for updating and keeping that, you know, information posted on the website of this, of this type. And I guess somehow we've got to make sure that that's happening and that they is, because there's a lot of stuff going on in the public because it provides a little tool for that to get out of.
Site will be as good as what our department's going to go ahead. Karen's going to bird dog it a little bit for us initially and hopefully the departments will take some ownership into their respective areas and.
Maybe we could just send out reminders to all the departments, say, yeah, you updated your site this month or whatever, just to, just to keep it civilized.
Exactly.
Love the pictures.
Yeah, the pictures are stunning, aren't they?
They are.
So I was going to put the supervisors up there too.
Oh, no, don't ruin, don't ruin the pictures.
Especially Larry.
Very nice, thank you.
Again, we're shooting for end of the week that we're going to release this. Again, give, as I said, a second last chance for the.
Smile on your face when you're saying that.
There's no satire.
There you go.
Appreciate your time.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. I'll, I'll come up for schooling on it.
I have a question. Now, this is just going to, just I'm actually overtake on that URL address that's up there.
Yes.
Now, for some reason, this old address that's up there, when they Google Woodbury County Island, this old one will pop up and it will have, it's not current, not today. You know, if there's any way to get that.
Yeah.
Pat? There, on the current site, there's still some links in the active stock on the old site and that's why that happens. But soon as you get this by, all that's going to die and should go away.
What happens is I get some calls here in election people, Google Woodbury County, and then I'll get that old site and all the information.
That would have a little later.
All right, thank you.
What he said.
That sounds like something I would say.
You're my mentor, Larry.
Any other questions for John?
That looks good. Thanks, guys.
We come to the part of the agenda, we're hearing of any individual or group that wishes to make a presentation. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to be heard? Yes, sir.
I would like to present some.
If you'd step up to the mic here, we need your name and address and then.
I'm Robert Holden, better known as Bob, who resides in Mobile, Iowa. And I would like to present a situation of farmland just outside of Mobile that retains to your county grade show with a, what we commonly would call the Lamar Blacktop. I want to circulate these photos. The first one, as you see, was taken in the year 2000. At that time, I contacted Morris Weldy, who was kind enough to come over and look at the situation that I was concerned about. Everything, we agreed of everything that needed to be done as far as fixing the situation. But he said, unfortunately, we don't have any money. So anyway, if you look on the pages marked year 2000, in the lower left-hand corner, you'll see three numbers that are circled, the points of interest. Number one is the distance between the, the creek, creek bed and the line fence, that's my neighbor's fence, to the west. Number two is the buildup of a sandbar which is deposited there by the creek every time it makes that little loop there, slows down the current. We now have a sandbar there that is 75, 80 foot long, which is forcing the water closer and closer to the line fence. Now, number four is the county bridge. Give you a little history about that bridge. That bridge was built by Dixon Construction out of Craxtonville. A good friend of mine was the superintendent, Jack Dixon, told me that he, he was delighted, they were delighted to get their contract for $65,000 to build that bridge, which I would imagine now would be much, much more than that. This was back in the early 1960s that built was, that bridge was constructed. Okay, now if we'll switch to the most recent match, map, 2012, you'll see that that boundary between the creek and my neighbor's line fence has been reduced to more than half of my usable distance. Now, on that 2012 map, it shows the road that we use to get to that property for farm purposes. Right at the end of that, you see that little, right, right in the corner, you'll see a little photo there of our driveway that we drive down and then we drive out to farm that area. There's approximately 300 acres there, of which we've got about 6% defiller strips. We've spent close to $50,000 on bank stabilization where possible, with riprap and grass. That will permit from the DNR. That gentleman is the access that we have to that $300, 300 acre farmland. The other possibility marked at the top of your page, number four, you'll see that is a dirt road, not often maintained, no gravel, not passable many months out of the year. And that's our only access to that property from the road. Now, in order to make our access a little bit better, you might recognize that there's a covered bridge that we built and holds six. So that we could get there, this was suggested by your previous county engineer, that I buy a railroad flat car like you put in north of Pearson for a gravel road. The reason that I was interested in doing that is because when I applied for that covered bridge, it took two years to get the permit approved. They lost the first one, they advised me it was going to take a year to approve it. Then they lost it. I sent in another one and it was approved using the railroad bridge. The reason I went to the railroad bridge is by the time that I submitted my first request for that construction of that bridge, that two years was in the early year, years of 2000, I based my cost on steel and concrete and labor. And by the time that I got the permit granted, everything doubled. So that's why I went to the railroad car for its basement for the bridge. Now, right now, after the high water that we had this spring, we also lost another six or maybe eight feet of this driveway that we have off the end of that county bridge. I would venture to say that I will no longer be able to, it's dangerous now because it rides on the edge of the creek in some places. And I would like to have that sandbar removed or replace it and get that channel closer to the west side of that creek bank. Now, when they constructed that bridge back those days, they put the riprap on the wrong side of the creek. They put it on the west side, the east side instead of the west side. And that riprap is still there, but no use. So I would like to bring it to your attention that, that we would like to have something done about that, that, that situation because eventually it's going to take the, the west end of your bridge approach out. Channel is already headed that way and it'll be a matter of a few years and it'll be affecting your west approach to that county bridge.
Bob, have you visited with our engineer?
Yes.
Does he come up with any kind of resolution for you?
No, and, and I could understand. At that time, I didn't have any aerial photos. I had pictures that I had taken myself with a camera only some years, or 10, 10 years ago, back 2002 or something like that. But I didn't have these aerial photos and Mark looked at it and he says, well, he says, I can't really tell, you know, what's happening there. An aerial photo, and I thought, I didn't think of it at the time and I thought, well, I know where I can get them. And I went down to county ASCS office and they pulled these up for me.
Mark?
Larry, it's one of those projects that's been on my back burner. We do have access to the aerials. We have the aerials on our GIL system. The same ones that, that he has, they've all been scanned into the system and we can bring them up. I have some initial thoughts with, with the request, but wanted to investigate it further before I gave him a final answer. I haven't had my survey crew out there to start tracking this one yet like we've tracked other channel movements in the past. My initial feeling on this one is if it starts to cut in toward the bridge, we'll protect the bridge corner. We can do that within our existing right of way. The thing I question and that I haven't had a chance to fully investigate is whether we have an obligation to do any work to protect his access parallel to the fence. That's private property, it would seem to me to be Mr. Logan's responsibility to take care of that. Again, that's my preliminary thoughts on it, just so you know where, where I'm at with the complaint, but I haven't had time to really sit and fully investigate everything yet. We visited, what, about a month ago? Took a ride out there and looked at it and you've heard the other things we got going on the office right now. This is moving, but it's not an imminent failure. So it had, it just hasn't been one I've been able to get back to yet. I'm aware of the complaint.
What creek is this?
Wait, wait.
What's, what's the name of the creek?
West Fork. West Fork of the Little Sioux is what it is. That's our West Fork Bridge north of Mobile. Anything that would be done out there with channel work would be, would require a board of engineers permit. So we have to do, we'd have to do a complete survey to, to make that happen.
Who put down the riprap before?
It was put down as part of the bridge project, I believe.
So the county placed that?
Riprap on the, be the left bank and face downstream. Yes, the county put that in. I haven't had a chance to take out the plans yet.
May I make a comment? I don't quite understand why the county would take the initiative to put riprap on the, on the property almost directly across from where I wanted, wanted to put her across the creek. Why would they do one side and not the other? And the side they didn't do was the one that was most vulnerable.
And, and I can't second guess the designer until I look at it. That was built by Lloyd Calson. This bridge has been in place, what, about?
That bridge was built.
Twenty, 25 years?
Well, it was built about 67 or 68.
A little longer than that. And, and I really got to look at it to see why, why it was done the way it was done. You know, I, I just don't have an answer for you right now as to why the riprap's where it is and what they were attempting to protect. Again, that would, as you said, I haven't dug out aerials yet, but we do have them in the office. We can pan through them and see the history of how that stream's been moving. Typically, until a project begins to threaten the road, like we have up on county road D-12 on, on the Little Sioux, I recently applied for a hazard mitigation grant for that one because that is gradually moving to where it is threatening our road. We, we need to take some steps on that. We're also applying for a hazard mitigation grant on the Little Sioux itself, south of Craxtonville, in another area where the stream is cut within 10 to 12 feet of the road. But we're talking about a private property issue here. And I'm, my initial answer, as I said, is that I'm not convinced this is the county's responsibility to take care of and maintain that access or to do channel work out there until the point where it becomes a threat to the public access of the bridge.
And you're saying there's not a threat to the bridge at this time?
At this time, no.
What's the, 140th is the east-west, what's the closest north-south to this bridge?
Humboldt.
Sounds right.
What is it?
Humboldt.
And that is, he said it comes around on the dirt road on the backside of the property. The question comes down to is, in whose interest is it to, to maintain the access off of 140th to access the farm ground behind it? Is that the county's responsibility or the landowners? Is it our job to go in and rebuild and maintain a channel that's meandering? Again, my first answer is no, but I'd like to have the opportunity to go through the plans and, and again, this just is a project that is awaiting a look and awaiting our survey crew to even quantify it, get us, so that if we do have to go after a core of engineers permit, at least we'd have the data to do it.
I'm not trying to push you, Mark, but have you got a timeframe that we can get back to Mr. Logan with an answer?
November, December at the earliest. I'm trying to push out designs right now, so I'd like to get those first few bridge designs out and head it in the permit process so that we can get bridges let for construction here in the next few months that we're trying to get going.
Will that satisfy you?
Well, if I had a glad choice to make some comments, I don't know if the, Mark's attitude toward this is, is acceptable as far as I'm concerned. They riprap the other side of the creek, I might add the long side of the creek, and on this sandbar that's creeping toward. Well, if I had a glad choice to make some comments. I don't know if the, Mark's attitude toward this is acceptable as far as I'm concerned. They riprap the other side of the creek, I might add the long side of the creek, and on this sandbar that's creeping toward the line fence. And keep in mind that these pictures were taken two years ago. We had a bank full of water go through there this spring and I think we've lost at least six, eight more feet. And if you stand up at the top and look at the, the river flow toward the bridge, it's already far enough to the west in a straight line to take out the approach of the bridge. Now, why would you want to neglect that to the point where it's more expensive to fix it? It's like I told Morse Welding, he has since winds with the balance of prevention, we're a common cure. That you took possession of that area when you put that riprap in across the creek. So I don't think that's a rightful argument that it's private property.
Let's have the county look at it, take an analysis, Mark.
If the board would like it sooner, so direct, we'll bring it up and get it done here in the next couple of weeks. But again, that just, we have other priorities right now, but we can shift those priorities if you show us.
I'd like to comment too on number four, the existing road that goes through that property. When I look at it this spring, it ruts right through the middle of the road, two foot deep. It's a dirt road, it's not a gravel road. The gravel road tends up that farmstead that you see to the west.
You say it's gravel up to the farmstead?
Yes.
And it's dirt?
Oh, yes. And that's a hill, a big hill.
What is that?
130.
130 Street. It's part of those 60 miles of dirt that we have that serve as land access roads scattered throughout the county, so. In these soils, it isn't uncommon for one good rain shower to cut a two-foot rut down the middle of one of those.
Well, let's get at the first project here first, because that takes priority with Logan. This one down here?
Yes.
On the street.
I would go in and work on that dirt road if we just have access from this one by the bridge.
You're saying that's cut out to the point where you can't not use it?
It will soon be, but right now, I'm driving within two foot to the edge of the bank. And that's where it looks, to drive through there.
Well, I think some of the board members will get out and take a look at this for themselves. Like Mark says, if it's on, you know, if it's private property and we get involved with the Corps, there's not a lot we can do. We've been down that road before. And as far as the riprap on the wrong side, I'm not an engineer and I have no idea what they put it, where they put it. So whether they were right or wrong, I couldn't tell you.
I hope you're one, Larry, that gets out there and sees it because it's kind of trouble. That riprap hasn't even been washed clean. It's just sitting there year after year.
Yeah, but it hasn't gone anyplace.
Don't benefit to anybody.
The bank is exactly as they built it in 1967, that's true.
All right. Thank you very much.
You bet.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bob.
Is there anyone else to be heard? Any of the board members? Oh, that's... Come on. Okay, if there's nobody else, we're adjourned.